It's seven o'clock, we will call the regular village board meeting to order. Everyone rise to say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk would please call a roll?
Moravka?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
March?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ham?
Here.
Bowden?
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the June 20... It's not right to see. It would be the August 13th.
Geez, you can't take good health in.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 13th, 2008 regular village board meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
Motion by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee March. Moravka? Yes. March?
Yes.
Jones?
Present.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda items? Going to reports of committees, no police chiefs report tonight, engineers report?
Yeah, I have a few things. The local street resourcing job, the concrete work is all finished. The contractor's been a little slower than we would have liked on getting the streets grinded down and paved. They did say they will be out there tomorrow, starting with the grinding and the paving. As far as Rathgie Road, that project, all the relocations are pretty much done except for ComEd, but they're going to be done soon. And now, I have a schedule from P.T. Pharoah, the contractor. They're going to start the detour, as of right now, September 7th. And they're on their official schedule, their plan is, they're going to start with Storm Sewer and Culver and water main adjustment. And then, their goal is to have, well, they definitely want to have the binder, which is the lower layer of the pavement paved before the end of winter. That's what's on the official schedule, and then do the surface course in the spring and the pavement markings. However, they said if everything goes well, their real goal is to have it all done before cold weather, but we won't know that right now.
Depending on when it changes.
Depending on whether, yeah, when it changes, I mean, you know, good days are. So, they'll definitely be, the base course will be down and can be driven on over the winter. And they said if that was the case, they put a ramp for public work so they wouldn't bang into the curb with the plow. But hopefully, they'll get it all done. As far as Route 50 and Corning, AT&amp;T's the last one. I just drove by and I saw they were working today, Bob told me.
Yeah, they were out there today.
I still see the old poles and some wires hanging from them, so they're supposed to be ramping up any day now. And then, once they do, then we got to really talk to you quite about what their schedule is, because they haven't given us an updated schedule until they said that work's done. So, once we find that out, we'll talk to them and figure out the best options. I know, I believe I was asked about West Street last time, about, you know, when we could do a, try to get a grant for federal funding for that. Will County just actually announced that their Will County government, their call for projects won't be until the end of 2019, or actually, January 2020, I think maybe is when it's due. So, if we want to think about West Street, something to apply for funding, we could, you know, start thinking about it in 2019, what we want to do.
Do you want to explain to the board a little bit about the sidewalk, you know, the Safe Routes to School?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think the mayor, there's a grant opportunity that come up, it's a federal grant through IDOT. It's called Safe Routes to School. Part of it's actually being used for the Route 50 and Corning project and older, a lot older funding. I thought about Piattone because I know you wanted the sidewalk connection between Rathgie and the Gull Anions or even the McDonald's. I'm not sure, and it's definitely not definite, but it might be something to apply for because the school, the high schools don't count, but elementary school and the junior high are still within two miles of where the project could be. And we could, you know, it'd still be a connection for residents down there to get to, to be able to walk or bike to the schools. So, it's something we can apply for. You know, there's no guarantee we'd get it. The construction funding would be 100% if you did receive it, but because it's IDOT and federal, and you make, you go through a phase one environmental process and everything, the engineering is a lot higher than a project that we typically do for a small, you know, relatively small side of a project. So, I, you know, the grant would be for the construction, the maximum's $200,000. I have to do more detailed estimates and figure out our route, but we, you know, shape the project around the grant amount, I would think, what we think. And then, engineering, you're looking at probably total between phase one, phase two design, and phase three, probably around $80,000 for engineering. To apply for the grant, I estimate $2,500 or $3,000 to do the application letters of support.
So, we can apply, and then only if it's, if we're approved, then we do the engineering? We don't do the engineering ahead of time?
There's one thing you might want to do, which is a quick environmental survey through IDOT, because it takes six months to go in. Then might, you might want to do that. I can look at that in more detail on the timeline, but I have applied for these grants in the past. I've gotten two of them from Ariadne Park for sidewalk replacements, but that was right in, right adjacent to the school, the neighborhoods were.
Well, I definitely think it's worth a, you know, worth taking a shot.
Oh, definitely. Is, I don't know, with the Rathgie Road that's getting fixed in front of the high school, or by the high school, is there a sidewalk going in there? There is?
Yeah, on the, the high school side, we're putting a sidewalk.
Awesome, okay. And by any chance, is it going to go all the way to Joliet? That subdivision that, okay, where it curves?
Oak Street?
Yeah, I think it's Oak Street.
Oak Street, yeah.
What's the one that comes off of Joliet, right there?
That's Joliet.
It's also Joliet, yeah.
But is it Joliet Road that comes to the dead end?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have my plans on it, but I think the sidewalk will go past Oak Street and go to Joliet. But then, there's nothing there, it'll just dead end there.
Right, okay. Okay, just asking, thank you.
So, when you do the grant proposal, can you include, we talked about doing like some kind of crossing light?
Yeah.
At the Meadows, or, you know, whatever that street is there, so people can actually cross the street, you know, have some kind of...
That would be, I guess first, we had to figure out the route, you know, what side of the street. There's some really tight land areas, and we probably want to talk to Will County, if they have a preference where to cross, either Rathgie or Meadow, if it's a mountain.
I think it's Meadow, yeah.
You probably just do, I would think you'd want to do maybe like a flashing beacon light with the crosswalk. You know, they're not going to make it a stop condition for the cars, they're not going to make it a red light or anything, just do more of a warning for the crossing. But we need to get Will County's approval on that, and, but yeah, definitely something we can include, we'd want to include, you know.
So, are you saying that you'd get, we'd have a better chance of getting it if it was like right next to an elementary school or the junior high?
It's hard to say.
I mean, we have a lot of sidewalks that aren't in around the elementary school, so I wondered if, if we have a better chance, like all, like around the backside by Oak Street and all, there's no sidewalks there, even like, there's no sidewalk that goes from the high school to the elementary school, right? There's nothing there.
Uh-uh.
Past the soccer field, I mean, I wonder if we'd get, if we'd have a better chance of, I mean, I'd love to, I want to get something out to McDonald's too, but...
I see what you're saying, though, would it tie better into the grant, right?
And I talked to Bob about that today, actually, too. I said, if the village would rather go that route, and you could do replacements or gap, you know, areas where there's gaps in sidewalks, that could be applied for as well. And, you know, instead, not as well.
Right.
We can make up like different proposals, too, and say, okay, what do we want most?
What's our timeline, Troy?
It's due November 19.
Okay, so it's coming pretty quick.
But you have to get started early because it has to get on, board meeting here, that's easy, it has to get out of school district board meeting. The school district has to do parent surveys, they have to do tallies, letters of support. There's a lot.
Well, I mean, what does the board think?
I think it's a great idea.
No, but what, do you think we should focus more on around the school? Or do you think we should go back to the Wilmington Road sidewalk, you know, which was something that we were going to do years ago, had a grant, you know, for it from the state, then everything kind of fell apart, and then that grant disappeared, so that's when that sidewalk disappeared, but...
Wilmington Road for me. Me, too.
I think around the schools.
I like this.
Fine.
I really have a question. We know that, we know that the Wilmington Blacktop has been slated to be expanded, or the possibility that it be expanded, within the next 10 years to a four-lane highway. And this was part of Morning Manhattan addressing, the St. Road being addressed the same way because of the impact of our intermodals to the east and west of us, and we're across town. So, if we went, if you put high priority on the Wilmington Blacktop, are we putting something in that will be destroyed sometime in the near future versus something that's long-lasting within the village that may not, that would always be our liability to go and do versus something that can incorporate into the revamping of that road?
True.
Just a question, folks.
It's definitely a point. If Will County decided to expand the road, the sidewalk would, but, but there's a good chance that Will County might put back a sidewalk with IDOT requirements for complete streets.
Right.
So, they might put it back if they're expanding the road anyway, I don't know for sure, but...
But then, an overpass, then? You have to, four-lane overpass, which...
For where?
For a walkway. Yeah, they would be, people would not be able to walk across that.
Oh, if, oh, you're like crossing.
If it went to four lanes.
Yeah, or maybe they'd put, they'd have to put a red light. It's just such a preliminary. I don't think it's coming anytime soon.
No, it's in the 50-year plan.
Yeah.
Tom, we can't keep going back.
I know, just a comment, they just put in an overpass at 6,000 Road North for Tack and Key, or Bradley, and that has passenger or walkways on each side of it. Already incorporated into it, and they have nothing on either side.
I guess just from my standpoint, you know, I think the Piattone Wilmington Road sidewalk is, you know, something that we really need. I guess I'm looking at what would be a higher possibility of getting funded, and I really, I think that we would probably have a better shot at getting the grant, the Safe Routes to School grant, if we could show a little more tie-in to the schools.
Another element that is part of the application is traffic calming. So, if there was a road that, you know, speeding, you know, there is an option to get funding for, not even know what you want to do, you know, speed humps or medians or speed tables to slow down cars. That's part of it, which could be added if you're doing sidewalk giving, you know, but...
But I think, I don't know, I think we'd have a better chance if we did, I still want to do the Wilmington Road one, but I think I'd rather see us try to get this grant for the schools, we'd have a better chance. I mean, there's, and we could put a sidewalk in, make a, you know, by the junior high that goes, you know, there's nothing on Blue Devil Drive, like either on the park side or the park, you know, the little softball field side, there's no sidewalks. Like I said, around the elementary school, there's nothing that goes between the high school and the, and the elementary school, there's nothing that goes out to Oak Street, so, that's just my...
It's, it's something we could talk about, you know, with maybe Bob, with ideas, or, you don't want to do too many different areas because of the way, you need full IDOT plans for this, so you're picking up, surveying all different areas, and then you need, you know, when they require environmental stuff for this and special waste, so you don't want to have too many areas. We do a couple of different segments, maybe, leave my recommendation.
Do you think talking with somebody from the school board would help? Like, somebody who actually works in the schools where a lot of kids walk? Would that help bringing somebody in and talking with Bob?
Yeah, see, see where areas need, or where, you know.
I could reach out to the superintendent, talk with him, get his feedback.
Just get your ideas, you must see.
We'll do that. And definitely maybe bring it back to the board at our next meeting and hopefully have a decision so we can get moving on it.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Troy?
That's everything.
All right, thank you. In your package, you have the code enforcement report for August. We'll go on to old business, item A, consideration of proposals from GMT LLC and GovHR in regards to the vacant village administrator position. Tonight, we heard from GovHR on their proposal for the search. If you recall, I think we had those proposals in your packs last meeting, and their total price for just, just the search portion of it was right around $20,000. And I think the gentleman, Mr. Peterson, kind of laid out, you know, how they did, went about doing their search for the administrator. I think, I hope everybody got their questions answered, you know, on that tonight. I did want to go back and revisit the GMT proposal. I know the board at the last meeting, it kind of swayed or, you know, gone to the GovHR side, but I guess I've been giving this a lot of thought and consideration over the last two weeks, and I do like the idea of the varied support, you know, in the GMT proposal. As part of their proposal, they have Gene Steinmark, you know, working on some economic development, and then also providing an interim administrator during the process for 12 hours a week, and then also conducting the search for the village. I did talk to Gene again today, trying to get some answers. I was hoping maybe I could get them here tonight, just to answer any board questions on how they conduct their search, so we could kind of give it a comparison to how GovHR does their search. And basically, what they said, you know, three of the partners are retired administrators, and they have a lot of connections, you know, throughout that community of administrators, but they would also do the advertising and the regular, very different municipal, you know, magazines and so forth, like GovHR would do. And they also have a pool of people that they reach out to. They've recently done Glen Allen Search, they've done Hazel Crest, and there were two other ones that they have recently just completed. So, they've been doing this, you know, also for a while. Also, my meeting with Gene, he really, and I, you guys, I think everybody, I don't, I don't know if trustee Moravka ever met Gene, if she was here for the meeting where he was here, but he is an economic development person that we've been talking with over the last year or so, and he's been, not in the hire of the village, but he's been working on some different projects concerning Piattone. And he does have a couple of things which I think have a lot of potential to move forward with. And I personally, I feel like the $8,000 a month combination for the economic development, the interim administrator, and the search, for a total of $24,000 for the three-month period, as opposed to the $20,000 for just the search. To me, I think we're going to get more benefit from that. I still think we're going to get some very viable candidates. They also, you know, really kind of answered the questions the same way. You know, I asked, who do you think, what kind of candidate do you think we're going to get? And they said, you're going to get either that young person, you know, who is, you know, possibly, and it's an assistant someplace else, you know, currently looking for that first-time administrative position, or you might get, you know, somebody more seasoned who's looking to, you know, go from a larger place to a smaller place, you know, at the close of their career. And I really think that's what we're, that's, that's kind of what we saw the last time we did this on our own, and I really think that's kind of the mix that we're going to get, you know, again this time. I don't think you're going to get somebody coming from a, a big community, you know, looking to come to Piattone unless, you know, I don't know how that would possibly happen. So, I don't know if you have any questions that I can answer, you know, that, in regards to the GMT proposal? I don't know if you want to wait and have them come back, or have them actually come in. We've never had them present a proposal, you know, to the board, but I guess I would really like that proposal to be considered as part of this also.
I have a question, Steve.
Yes.
Of the job, what portion would you consider the job economic development versus just day-to-day operations?
Economic development, what, what Gene, Gene's not an administrator, Gene Steinmark is not an administrator. He's purely an economic development person.
I mean, the guy we hire, the candidate we hire?
The candidate we hire, I think that economic development needs to be, you know, a big part of the candidate that we hire. I think that's going to be something, you know, that we as a village are looking for, you know, in the years to come. I also think we need somebody that has the ability to write grants. I think there's a lot of, you know, grant money that's going to hopefully be out there that we can go after, but we need somebody that has that ability, you know, to do that. So, those are the two biggest qualities that I'm looking for, you know, in a candidate.
Do you think most of the time would be spent doing that as opposed to day-to-day operations?
Well, no, the day, I mean, the day-to-day operations are all part of it, too. I mean, it's a...
I guess I view the two as, one is strong in economic development, the other one, I think is stronger for maybe...
Well, I'm, what I'm talking about in this proposal is, you know, just for these three months, you know, for this time period, we would have at least that portion, that economic development, we would have some support in the interim administrator position, but also that interim administrator is part of that economic development, he's part of that same group. You know, they all work together. I think we're going to lose, you know, three to four months without anything going on, you know, right now. I mean, if we go to GovHR, I think we're going to, you know, probably get, you know, some good candidates out of that.
But then we have to pay more on the tail end, right? It's $20,000 just for the search?
Just for the search, so for those, for that time period, we would not have anything else. We would have to do an interim house.
Okay, that means they're including somebody while we're searching, okay. Gotcha.
So, it'd be on hold, economic development, for three months?
We'd be on hold for a lot of things. I mean, like, right now, I mean, since, you know, the administrator left, I mean, I've been trying to do what I can do, you know, to pick up pieces and make sure that things don't fall through cracks, and, I mean, everybody else has, too. But, you know, it's just, I feel like we may be losing some things. I mean, things may be falling through the cracks. I mean, he's going to only be here 12 hours a week, but at least that's somebody else that will be keeping an eye on things, you know, and somebody that's had a lot of experience in that position.
Is it Gene himself, or?
No, it'd be Mike Schofield, who is a retired administrator, would be the interim.
Did you spell that?
Yeah. S-C-O-F-I-E-L-D, I believe.
S-C-H.
S-C-H, sorry.
S-C-H. Is that right? Is that what you said? I was listening to you, okay, I was like, I don't know where he's reading it, but I hear him.
So, I guess I'm looking for thoughts from the board.
Did you say that they could come in and talk to us?
I can, I can set that up, yes. Yes.
I think that would be appropriate. Just got a feel for it. I mean, we've heard from one guy.
Right.
And we'll hear from the other guy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
I would, I would like to do this sooner than later. Again, you know, I don't want to necessarily wait two weeks, so let me see what their schedule is, and I'll reach out to everybody and try to schedule a special meeting, a special committee of the whole, or maybe even just a special board meeting, where we could actually take action on it, you know, if we came to a decision, you know, that night.
Would Gene be here and Schofield both?
I, I will ask for them to be, yes.
I'm really comfortable with this Gene guy. He's very smooth with their situation. Personally, I would like to see somebody that's familiar as a poll.
Right, and they are local, I mean, they are local.
Okay.
Okay, let me set that up, and we'll bring it back to the board. So, do I need a motion to table that again?
Yes, you should, but for the next one.
Right, so if I can have a motion to table the consideration of proposals from GMT LLC and GovHR in regards to vacant village administrator position until the next meeting, whether it be the next regular village board meeting or a special meeting called?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Ham.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
And Moravka?
Yes.
New business, item A, Piattone Historical Society, Mill Fall Fest, 9/16/18, Corning Avenue with street closure. Steve Hoffner was here at the last meeting and spoke with the board. This is the annual Mill Fall Fest. They're looking at closing one lane on Corning from Conrad to Mill. They do leave the other lane open for emergency traffic, and chief is good with this.
Okay, thanks for the ask.
Motion by trustee Moravka, is there a second to approve the special event permit application from the Mill Fall Fest?
Second.
Motion, Moravka, seconded by Jones.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Item B, Piattone High School Student Council, request approval for the annual homecoming parade on September 14th, beginning at 4:00 P.M. This is a request for the homecoming parade, and I think they've shortened up their route this year. Looks like they're going from the school to Corning, to Conrad, to north, to west, down to Garfield, and ending at the junior high. So, they said, basically, they, they're shortening the route up because they need to get the sophomore players back in time to play football, yeah.
Try a good idea.
So, and chief is, chief is good with the parade route also.
I say yes.
Motion by trustee Moravka, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ham.
Moravka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Item C, raffle license, Will County Farm Bureau for ag education purposes. This is a permit that came in kind of after the fact. I guess they thought they had had their raffle permit because they had something else.
In January.
In January, so they paid their permit fee and just need a motion to approve it after the fact.
I'm motioning.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee Parker.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Item D, home occupation application, J Harpen 208, West Main Street, for a salon.
Hello. I'm a sonor.
Go ahead and just, I guess, tell the board what the application is for.
Um, I would like to open a salon in my home. I've been doing here for 13 years, and now, I don't know if you noticed, I have children everywhere coming, so, um, I need to work out in my house if it's possible. I am willing to do anything I need to do to make it happen. Do you have any questions? Sweet.
Yeah, like, I don't know what kind of question.
Three or four salons in town now, and if you want to open a legitimate business, I have no problems with that, but when these people are paying real estate taxes and insurances and providing parking and in business with both feet, and where do you draw the line with home occupation?
I actually do all of that also. I've been a total contractor for about eight years. So, I spend the taxes and doing the insurances and doing everything, and I plan on still doing all of that, so...
But you're converting a residential residence into a place of business.
One room in my home, yeah.
Where customers come and go?
Yeah.
Yeah, where, where does that stop? You know, if you were running an office out where you did work at home and then you went out, that's one thing, but I, I think it actually values the properties next to you. I wouldn't want a business next to my home. I wouldn't want a business next to my home. That's why you move into a residential neighborhood. Because if you let this go, then what's the next thing you let go? Somebody selling worms in a bait shop?
There's a lawyer who works out of her home and she has a business in her home. Is that the same thing or something different?
I grew up actually in the house across the street from Mary Ritzman. She owns a home loan.
It's, it's similar. She built an office there and I don't know what that's zoned, but, I mean, where do you stop it?
Yeah, Mary Ritzman lived down the street on the corner. We had one at her home also.
Pretty soon it turns into a free-for-all, you know. I look at what you do for one, what if everybody decided they wanted to have a home occupation and then does the residences just turn into a business district or, or whatever. And then you got the increased traffic, people coming and going, you got little kids riding on the sidewalk in residential neighborhood. You got people coming and going. I'm totally against it.
With this, that we got the regulation home occupation thing, what, can you kind of explain it to me a little bit more?
I was gonna, I'll let the attorney, if he wants to.
Well, sure. Specific questions, we have regulations for the home occupation and they're, they're pretty, you know, pretty set, pretty straightforward. And they have to comply with these regulations. As long as they're in compliance with these regulations, then obviously they would be, you know, in compliance with our current rules, which these...
I don't have a solid plan.
You can't have any display on the exterior of the dwelling or any signs or any displays outside. That's one of the, that's one of the rules. The, there's, you know, no assembly of products and that sort of thing, but that's got nothing to do with the salon. And it's got to be conducted entirely within the dwelling by a member of the family residing there. There's a limitation on the space that can be used. But that's pretty much it. Pretty much what we have for home occupation.
And as for people coming and going, the most evident of all is two parts. I can't work out more than two people at a time, so.
So there wouldn't be any parking issues?
No, not at all.
Is there a business entrance or just the front door?
Um, the way that my home is set up is there's an entryway which leads into a dining room. However, we can actually make a doorway into the front room, which is actually enclosed by a French door, so it'd be like its own separate entity, so people wouldn't be necessarily walking through my home, but we'll see that we don't have to see anything else about the kids and everything. But yeah, I, I have a pretty good plan set up.
My motion, yes.
What's more, is there any other discussion or questions from the trustees? And I never got you your answer, but the answer is do whatever you want as far as voting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we do have a motion by trustee Moravka to approve the home occupation application for Jenna Harpen at 208 West Main Street for the operation of a hair salon. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by trustee Hamm. The clerk, call the roll.
Moravka?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Present.
Uh, March?
Yes.
And Jones?
No.
So that is four yes, one no and one present. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Those guidelines, should I?
Sure, here you go. Here you go.
They were attached to the paperwork that you had picked up.
Item E, Girl Scouts, permission for solicitation for fall products, October the 1st through the 21st. Oh, no, what is? October the 1st.
The 1st through the 21st.
19 and cookie program.
Oh, that should be 18.
Okay.
And the cookie program is January 1st through the 21st.
Down the sheet.
All right, thank you. I guess I could have looked at that, I'm sorry. Questions or discussion on, anybody here from the Girl Scouts? Any questions or discussion on this? If not, a motion to approve the Girl Scouts to sell cookies for those dates. Second?
First.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Hamm?
Yes.
Item F, special event permit, Game On Bar and Grill, 115 North Second Street for a bike run for Park Lawn Charity on September the 8th, 2018. Hello, Vicki?
Hello. How are you doing? Good. So we applied for this last year and it was granted, but we had a rain date, so I don't have anything to go off to give you, like, oh, this is what we did last year. But basically what I'm asking for is we would like to temporary extend our beer garden to the full back parking lot, which we do with the tennis pool and the landlord approval and we already have all that, they said it's fine. We did it for the Ridgewood Bike Run that we had a couple of months ago. The only thing that's different about this one, and I've opened for input, one of the chief's concerns was always he didn't want the motorcycles parking in front. And it's probably, I should note that these are motorcycle games or groups or clubs, these are weekend warriors, parents like yourselves that ride motorcycles on the weekends. It's for adult with disabilities to help kind of get them up into a workforce and a little bit more independent living. So a bunch of parents, weekend warriors, not any kind of troublesome crap, but the chief's always concerned was he didn't want them to park in the front. So previously we closed off North and Railroad and we had the leader of the bike route, just bring them down and so we'd be kind of forced parking in the back. What's different about this one is the way Park Lawn structures their bike run is that they say, okay, you're going to Game On in Piattone and you're going to Romeoville, leave at 10:30, be back by 3:30. And they don't have a special route, they don't have a leader, they don't have, they can come and go as they please. So they may go to them first, they may come to us first, they're not following the one digital lines. So I don't know that blocking off the street is going to do any good. The only thing that I can think of is I can get an extra body to just hang out in the front of the bar.
And try to direct them around the back.
And just encourage people for the bike parking in the back, that we could just have the street sweepers go through the day before as a courtesy, because I know there's a lot of broken rocks out there and stuff. There was a car window that was broken and lots of rocks in the back, so. So just extend the beer garden so that we have, have a place to corral them, because if their bikes are out back, they're going to want to be out back. If their bikes are out front, they're going to want to be out front. So we'll push the issue of them parking in the back and then extend the beer garden, because it is about 500 motorcycles throughout the course of the day.
And I did talk to chief about this today and he said that he would be fine if the board would just approve it with the stipulation that Vicki talked to him and work out all, work out all the logistics out with him.
And that's totally fine. I just don't think, I put a question, and I don't think blocking off the street is going to be, it could be an inconvenience.
Yeah, he said just, he said just, just talk, talk with him and he'll work out the logistics with you.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee March.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Questions in the, sorry, thank you, thank you. All right, no problem. Thanks a lot. Questions in the press? No press. Correspondence, communications, petitions?
Can I just ask a question? The house on Garfield that you mentioned.
Tom, step, step up. My apologies, sir.
Thank you.
The house on Garfield you mentioned in the report?
Yes.
What's going on there? Is that a tenant or is that a owner?
No, it's actually a owner, owner.
I don't think it is, Tom.
Yes, it is.
Does it, um?
It is, here and I talked to you.
That house owns it.
Um, there's another that house in the building.
Not.
I don't want to publicize it, that's, we can talk off base on everything. With regard to it, Sykeston claimed and monitored, I was there today, they've done a good job of, you know, reducing the amount of items that have been left out and around, they're getting a corral. They're coming in compliance, which is what we really want them to go and do.
Yeah, I mean, you just got to keep that, because I mean, I walk by there every day and they, I mean, it is much better than it was, but it was still, I mean, their solution was to get a trailer, they put everything in the trailer now and then they still, I don't know, I ordered something about stuff on the side of the house, but I mean, there's all sorts of bikes and junk on the side of the house.
Well, according to the village codes, you know, bicycles are not supposed to be or don't have to be housed inside a building. They can be out in the, we see it all over the place, maybe not that much concentration of bicycles. We don't have a limitation in our ordinances about the number of people that can have it at home within here. So, you know, I, you don't, you don't, there may be enough people there, there may not be enough people that can afford all riding bicycles.
Right.
I had an issue about a, it was quite funny because I had to think back to my childhood. A fort was built by the children in the back so that they could play. And it's not as a construction as we would see a playhouse, which not everybody can necessarily afford a playhouse with $250 or whatever for something. It's nice construction, that's even the plastic ones. But they have a little fort in the back and, you know, I thought I might be putting a cover over the top of that, so it's not necessarily inside you, but it's a child's fort. And when we had a hailstorm, we were all out with cardboard and we were taking the wire that held the bundles together from, and the cardboard came from the shingles that were put on the roof and we lost those. This is going back many, many years ago. And we were army tanks out in the yard, we probably left a dozen army tanks out there, you know, after, as they died in the process of rolling in the inside of them to get from point A to point B rolling over kids. So yeah, long story short.
That's, yeah, we're a little off subject there.
Yeah, so keep an eye on it.
Yeah, that's, the point is, yeah, stay, stay on it. I mean, and Tom and I have talked about this particular property a couple times and...
I've got a pretty phone call.
And I, after you, so, yeah.
And along the side of the place, it's not just bicycles, certainly.
Right, so, I mean, they need, it needs to be in compliance.
Yeah. Can you finish furniture out there in the front yard for resale?
Not for rea, not as a business, but, I mean, as their own furniture, I suppose.
No, it's not their own, they buy some stuff and they bring it in.
Right.
And then they...
So, I mean, they, they don't have a home occupation permit.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, and that's kind of the way this needs to be addressed. They, they need to comply as, you know, a resident and not store everything in the world, you know, around.
I have to go with the residents, that they can't have a business out of here without a building, without a, a, operating.
That just needs to be, because the neighbor, the neighbors are getting frustrated, so we need to get that.
And as far as the sales deals, I've not seen them selling as a product, so they can work, you know.
They sell it on eBay and then people come in and I think they take some of it somewhere too.
Once again, you know, I think...
They're purchasing merchandise to bring it in, they're supposedly repurishing and refinishing. I was over there one day and they had it all out there. They're sanding and painting and staining and whatever.
There's no doubt that they've done refurbishing.
People come and go and buy it.
But as to whether or not it's been going for sale or not, I don't have any information on that. If we come up with any actual facts, we can certainly follow up.
If you ask them, they'll, they'll tell you that, that's what they do.
I did ask them, they can tell you that.
For resale.
No.
That's less than they do.
Just see if they can just clean it up and then...
Yeah, and, and if you go by, I think they, they have done that. I looked in, I looked in the backyard today and it was cleaned up. I know that there was a lot of furniture out there, a lot of furniture, and there were vacuum cleaners out there. We had a talk and it's all been cleaned up. The front yard, in the driveway, there's no furniture there today, other than what